First item is your approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Then we need the consent agenda for the minutes.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, good. Okay, let me catch us through that. And I will open the floor for a public comment if there was anybody out there who wishes to make public comment. Yes, we just did. Talk to Colleen after.
The thing's better not on the agenda. I just have a correction on the minutes, but that's okay. I can talk to you later. You can send a email and then... Doesn't change anything substantial.
Well, it does. It talks about the survey that Jim was talking about on the second part of the minute, when it was a national survey, the Longwood Report. It was not specific to Cannon Beach. Just wanted to make sure that that was stated.
Colleen, I think that...
Is that the national citizen survey?
I don't recall what it was, but my preference is that if anybody wants to make a change, let's bring it up here, so there's not a change made after it's approved.
I withdraw my motion, then?
No, it's already been passed. So what we can do is, Robin can make a specific motion on a specific item within that. Even though we've approved the minutes, make a motion that states that you have a change specific to one line, I guess.
I have a change for the work session, which was Tuesday, March 6th, and it has to do with the Cannon Beach Chamber of Commerce presentation. And it's really the last line where, or three lines where they're talking about 9% of the people that travel are traveling for art destination. But it doesn't clarify, which Jim did at the time, that the national survey is called the Longwood Report. This is a very, it could pertain to Oregon or nationally, not clear which, but that it's very clear that this is not specific to Cannon Beach.
It's a national survey, not particular. Okay.
Okay.
Making that as a motion that needs to be seconded?
Yeah.
I make that as a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any concern about this? Okay, Colleen, let's do a roll call on this, because this is...
Council President Bedfield?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Opelby?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll make that change.
Okay. Back to where we were. Anybody out there have a public comment? Last chance? Okay, we're going to move on then. Good thing, because we have a bunch of proclamations to read. First, first one is consideration of ordinance for tree removal. Jeff?
Sorry, I thought you all were doing the legislation.
Well, that's the way it's listed on my thing.
Talking by surprise. Okay. So, Colleen, you prefer me to... This is my first ordinance. I know you all have done two readings, right? So I don't know how do I read it, what do I read it?
No, you don't have to do any reading. This is your back and forth.
Oh, okay.
I'll read it. I'll read it when it's time.
Okay. So this is something that consideration of ordinance 1903 for the purpose of amending Cannon Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 177, Tree Removal and Other Effective Sections, Title 17. And this was before the planning commission, a considerable time. It should stay starting in August and ending in January 24th, 2019. When it was recommended for approved, they know quite a few work sessions and public hearings on this. The major changes for the ordinance were the exterior renovation of cost of ground disturbed. Each site plan, there's a new kind of insertion of site plan within every one of the different sections of the zoning ordinance. If anything, a tree greater than six inches can engage as measured from four feet above elevation, capture the tree on the property, and if any one tree touches on the neighboring property, it's going right away, which might be damaged by construction, if identified by a certified arborist. Through the recommendation, the planning commission made, like I said, substantial changes, and then they inserted quite a few kinds of in the records, showing a clean version, then a highlighted version showing the stress roots, which will show you section by section what those changes were. And the planning commission, like I said, recommended. Any questions?
No questions? Okay.
I would move to read ordinance 19-03 twice by title only.
I'll second.
Motion to read twice by title only. Colleen?
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Opelby?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Bedfield?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes.
Jeff, if you would be, this is the time to read it twice.
This is me.
Oh, Bruce.
This is ordinance 19-03 for the purpose of amending the municipal code, Chapter 1770, Tree Removal and Other Effective Sections of Title 17, Zoning. Again. Ordinance 19-03 for the purpose of amending the municipal code, Chapter 1770, Tree Removal and Other Effective Sections of Title 17, Zoning.
Very good.
I move to adopt ordinance 19-03, amending municipal code, Chapter 17.70, Tree Removal and Other Effective Sections of Title 17, Zoning, per the planning commission recommendation.
I'll second.
You have a second? A motion to adopt. Colleen?
Counselor Opelby?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Bedfield?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, resolution.
Consideration of Resolution Authorizing City of Cannon Beach to Apply for Local Economic Opportunity Grant Fund. Mike?
Good evening.
Oh, you just appeared.
So, good evening, everyone. My name's, for the record, Mike Myers, an emergency manager for the city of Cannon Beach. And for you today is a consideration for your adoption of resolution 1903. This is to delegate the authority to the city manager to sign an application for a grant from Business Oregon. This grant came about about a week and a half ago, so we had a very small timeline to get the grant in. It's for a total of $30,000. The $20,000 of the grant will be used to offset my wages, which I think is a good business practice, in order for us to write what's called tactical scenario-based plans. These are very specific, detailed plans that are written for sections of our community around emergency management, any kind of scenario that we could imagine might take place. Another $10,000 of the $30,000 award goes for new hours worked from an employee, and that employee would be Laura Rice. You might know her as Puka. Laura will be doing some outreach with me. And this grant award starts April 1st of 2019 and would end in April 2020. So we have a fairly short timeframe to get these tactical scenario-based plans in place. This allows the delegation of authority of the city manager to sign the grant application, and I hope that you would support the resolution 1903.
Thanks, Matt.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you one more thing? We will be bringing something to you probably at the May meeting, because we are applying for more grants. And frequently, the grants require some authorization for whoever's the signatory on the grant to have the authorization of the governing body. And so if you want it to be me, then we would need to say that. If you want it to be the mayor, we'd need to say that. But because we only vote once, one time a month, we want to make sure that we can sign a grant at any time. So we'll be bringing that forward, so we don't have to do this each time. We were just fortunate, we had a meeting in the timeframe for the application.
Sir, we're looking for a motion.
I move we adopt resolution 19-03 authorizing the city of Cannon Beach to apply for the local economic opportunity grant from Business Oregon, and delegating authority to the city manager to sign the application.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Colleen?
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Bedfield?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Opelby?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes.
And thank you. Next item, proclamation proclaiming the month of April as Sexual Abuse Awareness Month. Jason, do you...
Yes, sir. I'm just asking that council consider adopting proclamation 1901 proclaiming the month of April as Sexual Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Cannon Beach.
Thank you. Normally, what we do for these is pass them first or discuss them, and then I'll read it. Or somebody will read it. So. I need a motion.
I was crafting the motion, move that we designate the month of April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Nope. Colleen?
Council President Bedfield?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Opelby?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes.
It has been our practice to read our motions. I know we've talked about whether we need to or not, but I will read this one. We do have two more, if there's any volunteers for those.
I will, Sam, if you need.
Thanks, Brandon. Whereas sexual assault affects Oregon's every day, whether a victim or survivor, or as a family member, friend, partner, neighbor, employer, or coworker of a survivor. And whereas Oregonians of all gender identities experience sexual violence, including an estimated one in four adult women who has been the victim of rape, and nearly one in five men who have has experienced sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas certain populations in Oregon experience much higher rates of sexual violence due to systematic oppression and equity. And whereas compassionate, courageous, and dedicated individuals, local organizations, and other partners have provided services and support for victims and survivors, and worked to prevent sexual violence for decades. And whereas sexual violence is preventable, and all communities are strengthened and encouraged by healthy, nonviolent interactions, relationships, and social norms. And whereas every individual and a community in Oregon has a role to play to help eliminate sexual violence by working together to promote sexual change. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of Cannon Beach does hereby proclaim the month of April to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and asks all citizens to join advocates and communities across the country in playing an active role to prevent sexual violence. Passed by the common council of the city of Cannon Beach this second day of April 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. The next one. Proclamation of April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I make a motion to the purpose of designating the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, proclamation number 19-02.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. Colleen?
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Opelby?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Bedfield?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes.
Motion has passed, and Brandon will read it for us.
All right. Whereas every child is precious and deserves to grow up in a healthy, safe, nurturing environment free from the dangers and harmful effects of child abuse and neglect. And whereas child abuse and neglect impacts our entire society and can cause traumatic psychological, emotional, and physical harm, resulting in long-term economic and societal costs. And whereas child-focused prevention and intervention programs offer positive alternatives and outcomes for children, and encourage families to develop strong, durable ties to their communities. And whereas child abuse prevention succeeds through partnerships among parents, child welfare agencies, mental and physical health care providers, schools, law enforcement agencies, churches, businesses, and community members by fostering loving, supportive, and violence-free homes. And whereas all citizens need to be more aware of the effects of child abuse, neglect, and prevention in order to encourage healthy parenting in healthy communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of Cannon Beach does hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Cannon Beach. Passed by the common council of the city of Cannon Beach this second day of April 2019.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Brandon. Okay, our next one. Carrying April as, April 12th as Arbor Day in the city of Cannon Beach.
We have this request every hearing we're being treated in USA, really into Arbor Day and the whole Arbor Day Foundation thing. So Arbor Day is, we've been requested to have it observed here in Cannon Beach on the 12th is actually a different date than the rest of the country.
Rest of the world, Brian, okay.
Is that to coincide with the Thursday celebrations?
Tree plant.
Okay.
Perfect.
I move we proclaim April 12th, 2019 as Arbor Day in the city of Cannon Beach.
I'll second it.
Seconded it. Any discussion? Colleen?
Counselor Opelby?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Bedfield?
Yes.
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation. And whereas trees can be reduced, can reduce the erosion of our precious top soils by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuels for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city can increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Be it resolved that I, Sam Stile, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Cannon Beach in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 12th, 2019, as, as in the city of Cannon Beach, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Passed by the common council of the city of Cannon Beach this day, 2nd of April, by the following city council. Cool. Barb, where are the trees going to be planted this year?
We're going to plant two trees at the Academy, and then at the south end of Cannon Beach, by the trees in the north side.
Oh, fine. Okay, thank you.
1:00.
1:00. Probably on the 12th, right?
Very good.
Just wanted to get that out there again. Next item. Public hearing considering the setback reduction decision by the planning commission on V-1806, fourth. Jeff?
This is the fourth appeal of a setback reduction decision by the planning commission on variance 18.5 to prove the parking variance is not a side right setback request. The applicant, property owner, is Mike and Mary Cannon Ford, requested a parking reduction variance in setback reductions of conveyance, replacement of dwelling debt. Property is re chopped and heat foot easement by way of less...
First line.
...used to off street. The existing dwelling is less than three feet to the north and south property line in 10 feet from the side right setback. Property is dimensional with stretching of 2,500 square feet and limited access to tree. If the parking reduction variance is plus 2, 9 foot by 18 foot required parking space for a single family dwelling, 17 to 18 over 10, to the single 9 by 18 space proposed. The property is in the city's residential moderate density R1 building, known as street side setbacks for new construction are R1 building of 12 feet and 5 feet for side right setbacks. The setback property consists of a 25 foot by 100 foot block with an oceanfront setback reduction estimated 28 feet to 6 inch. The current dwelling is placed in a lot in 1938.
Danny?
Variances are authorized under 1782 and setback reductions are authorized under 1764. Approval requirements are circexive in the staff report. The planning commission, at the regularly scheduled November meetings, public testimony included by a briefing, the parking variance, yet denied the side right setback reduction. The applicant appealed the decision within requirements, exception 17815 on November 30th, and the applicant asked to extend the appeal on January 16th, 2019, and that ready is too strict. And the setback reduction was to reduce required 5 foot side doors setback 3 feet on the north and south side of the subject property. The planning commission heard that, and like I said, they were not satisfied with the rationale. And yet they did say they would entertain a future reduction if it resolved the concerns of the neighbors and any... You now have the floor, you under 17816, the scope of review. And that's your ability to have four different things to do, restrict, restrict it to the record. We have been appealed from Mr. Deneva, and he has updated that and brought some new materials. And so he is asking that you entertain new materials, and that I can see hearing, that hearing on specific issues or issues. And that's the second option, maybe remand the matter to the jury body of the planning commission, or do it in a no-go hearing, and open it up for...
Hey, Jeff?
Yes.
Is, I'm a little bit confused just before we move forward. Is tonight a public hearing or a non-public hearing?
Well, yes. And that's the, I think, the confusion was how it has been done previously. I think it was noticed as a public hearing. And so I think they, you know, I can't say that they have to open it up as a public hearing, but I would recommend that since it was...
Notice that? So my, just a note that as a quasi-judicial hearing, the mayor, they want to ask for council mistress, experte contacts, and so forth. Do you agree?
Yes.
I agree. I have my cheat sheet right here. I'm ready to go.
Oh, sorry. I'm not in the room.
That's okay. I just remembered I had it.
And like I said, I have, we have information from the applicant, new material. Another reason I highly recommend to open it up as a public hearing, they're also from the... A comment I would like to make is, I'm really getting tired of new evidence always being presented on appeal. They've had ample opportunity to review this with the planning commission. That's their role. And the planning commission hears all the evidence that's available, and suddenly, all these appeals are coming through. Oh, we have new information. And typically, it doesn't turn out to really be new information. It's just another chance to appeal to another body in hopes that there'll be a change of opinion. And I would prefer to keep this restricted to the record made on the decision being appealed.
I would, I would also say that in the future, that's why I want to separate these hearings to, two times before. So the first time will come before you passing just that decision. I don't want to be there. And so you can restrict it without, you know, this type, with the evidence for you. And I think traditionally it's been done where you're getting the information from your packets. And that's why I, I've never seen that done.
So you did...
The information in the packets is the information from the record.
And that's what we've spent our time reviewing.
Okay, let me go through the public notice stuff first. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter at this time? Does any council member believe he or she has a conflict of interest or a personal bias? Has any council member had any experte contacts or made a site visit?
Site visit?
Site visit.
We've had the staff report so far, so is there any additional correspondence? I don't think so. Does the city council wish to hear this on the record or de novo, that is, with new evidence? I think we've been asked. You want to do this on the, on the, on the record?
Well, I don't need it in the form of a motion, but I would move that we hear this and restrict it to the record made on the decision being appealed from the planning commission.
Do I have a second on that? I'm not here in a second, man.
I'm sorry. I'm just taking my time here.
Okay, that's...
I do second the motion.
Okay. Before I ask for a vote, we can have some discussion on that, if you want.
That's what I'm hoping for.
Okay. Go ahead. I now have a second. We can open it for discussion.
I guess of the other councillors that didn't make a second, are you not of the opinion that you'd like to have the hearing held just based on the information already presented?
You know, it doesn't, doesn't really make that much difference to me. I think, I think we're much more educated on what we have just reviewed. If we get new evidence, we may want to delay a decision on it because of the new evidence, but it doesn't make that much difference to me.
And should the new evidence go back to the planning commission?
Well, that's a good question, too.
I think that's fair, to put it back in their lap, since we're supposed to be making a decision about what their decision was. And if we don't, if they don't have it, how can we kind of go over their head?
Well, we have, we have the information they based their decision on, out of the time of the hearing.
Okay, there's no new.
But if there's new evidence...
Yeah, that's what...
I don't feel like, I'm prepared to take the role of the planning commission and hear new evidence and potentially overrule their decision. I think that's their, that's their... I think that's their, that's their prerogative. So if we don't feel comfortable in restricting it to the record, then it should be remanded back to the planning commission because I don't want to hear it on a short notice like this. We have no packet, no, no basis, other than some people coming up here and talking to us and without having a chance to really study it. Motion been made and seconded to be restricted to the record.
I'm, I'm kind of agree with Nancy, I'm comfort, I'm comfortable with hearing the new evidence and making a judgment on it, but I've been through this a lot, so I, you know, I, planning commission stuff is kind of fun, but I can, I can see where you're coming from on the fact that quite often, new evidence can be very confusing when you studied something else. So I see where you're coming from and so. Any other concerns? I will ask for the roll. On the motion to decide whether we're going to do this on the record or not, which was not, the motion is to not. Correct? To
Make, make our decision based on the record.
On the record.
Made on the decision being appealed.
Okay.
Planning commission's recommendation.
Colleen?
Councilor McCarthy?
Ah, yes.
And President Councilor Benfield?
Yes.
Councilor Rissie?
Yeah.
Councilor Olberty?
Yes.
Mayor Stein?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to listen to, we're going to try and limit any presentation to the evidence we have. So, "I will ask for pertinent criteria to be considered or noted in the staff reports and listed in the criteria sheets next to the west door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive planning municipal code which the person testifies believes to apply to the decision." Specific to the, the record. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from their chairs, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant? David?
David Finaida, Post Office, Fox 648, Golden River Park, Oregon, nine seven nine four five. Yeah, I'd like to add some words. So that is the end. I mean, I think to present the original design essentially.
Yeah.
So the ors own a lot just south of Golden River, that they actually inherited from their parents, so as Jeffrey indicated, I think it was nineteen thirty-eight, was the original purchase of the property and of course by the fact that the city had not incorporated and this twenty-five foot long non-standard lot was, was developed. So they obtained the lot through the family and to me, that twenty-five foot lot represents a hardship in that it is only twenty-five feet wide. So in designing the house for it, it becomes a bit of a challenge where we would have a fifty-foot lot, obviously with my setbacks. So what we came to the planning commission with was a nineteen-foot wide house and I gave you the details of the plan, but just as an overview, it represented a linear stairway, a linear hallway and bedrooms off the side of the hallway. That looked all well and good, however, in order to get usable space, it dictated a certain width for the house, so we came to the planning commission requesting the three foot setbacks as well as the nine foot, the single nine foot by eighteen foot parking space, which is how we use the property now. So again, the planning commission saw the lives, obviously, in granting that single parking space, but turned down the three foot setbacks as being just too close. Now, one of the things I pointed out at the time was even with five foot setbacks, code, and Jeffrey can confirm this, but the zoning code actually allows eighteen inch projections for a length of ten feet off the side of a five foot setback. So you can actually reduce the setback to three and a half feet through projections can, can be long. So
David, could you define projections? My understanding, it's a eaves.
No, it's actually a, for example, a window seat or a bay window, it can extend to the floor as usable space, but it can be like a bay window or a window seat. So theoretically, if we were to meet the five foot setback, we could technically reuse it effectively by the eighteen inches to a three and a half foot setback.
So you're saying the foundation then would be the setback?
Yes, that's correct. That is correct. Now, I did want to point out too, and this was another point we wanted to make, their existing cabin, which is shown in this dash line, is actually two and a half feet at two different corners, one at the southeast corner, one at the northwest corner. And so what the ors are hoping to accomplish is not only replace the cabin, but orient it parallel to the property line. It's actually skewed on the property like many of our old cabins are. So they want to both remedy that two foot six setback that they currently are at and the idea was to increase that to three feet on both north and south sides. We have since studied this, just a little, if I could interject a little compromise, and that is, we actually have studied a seventeen foot plan, which would actually create four foot setbacks on both sides and against a one foot setback reduction. That was actually what I was going to be presenting tonight and I don't know if you want me to go into that at all, but that is something that I hope to bring up. So that was the nature of the original application and if it is such a case where we need to go back to the planning commission with a compromise, that's appealing to the council, we would certainly be able to do it at a relief. In order, we aren't in a future, but in order to move the process through the city, we'd be receptive to doing that. So that, that sufficient?
Yeah, if you want.
I don't want to spend a lot more time on it, are we putting it?
No, we got, we got other presentations or we'll see if there's other presentations.
Okay. Can I add that definition that in these states it pretty seems to have a projection in their required yard in seventeen nine seventy and it says bay window, there's no use of the floor area and not exceeding a length of ten feet and not more than one per building elevation on the first side. They project not more than eighteen inches into required side yard or thirty-six inches into required front or rear yard. Bay windows may not project into required oceanfront. And this is just about that.
Yeah. You can actually see it on their adjacent neighboring house right here. That's exactly what that is allowed to do. This house did not receive side yard variances, but in fact, it's built within three and a half feet of property through that method.
Okay, well, we might have questions, Dave, so just, just so you know. Our next, are there any presentations by proponents? Any neighbors, friends who want to? Proponents? Okay. Are there any presentations by opponents? There we go.
So we are the neighbors, my name is Sandy Fitzpatrick, our address is thirty-five thirty, South Pacific, Tolabana. Yes. Sloppy on my reading. This is kind of an emotional situation. They're good friends of ours. We have our property on the market. The property, I'll give you a little history. When you guys say it's two foot six from the property line, goes back to that same story, all those properties in there are skewed because of the droughts or they're so rich in the south, two foot six inches. You guys all know what I mean. You've heard it. The neighbors that are to the south of us were allowed to go four foot and they did straight, no bump outs or no bay windows. Four foot is close, but you know, it was allowed because they said they were going to lift their house up and, you know, so they paid, you guys, we all approved. I, I agreed too, I was, I was made a fool. And anyhow, they jacked the house up, poured the new foundation, put the house down, tore down all the walls, removed most of the base floor, left maybe eight to ten boards of the old house. So we were trying to take advantage of all that. But with this all being said, these three lots that are back on this easel basement are very unique lots. They're very hard to build. The house that's to the south of this, north of this, I get my directions, which is Marcy's and, when they came and they asked, we were all in there fighting for five foot, to stick to the five foot setbacks because anything closer, when you get all those small houses are too close. And I was one of them. Other people in this room were, you know, we all fought no more than five foot setbacks, but we did agree to the one parking spot, which what was given was ridiculous. And we agreed to reduce the setback on the, get my directions, right here, the east side so that they have a bigger building or something. With that being said, since that was allowed, the east side setback, the ors should also be allowed to have a few very in hot. Because that one setback was allowed, I think that from the nine fifteen, that wasn't approved originally, right? Then not, so on the, that was?
That was, yes. That's the variance.
Oh, you told me it was.
No, that's the variance, yes.
That variance was approved in nineteen fifteen. We were out of, out of the states when the, or even when this all happened. Okay, so, yes, we know that they want to possibly go to a four foot setback. In doing that, we're going to lose ocean view. We're already going to lose ocean view and we knew that when we bought our property twelve years ago, that these properties would eventually develop. But if you draw it out on paper from our side window, that one foot, we will lose view. With us trying to sell a house, it's not really fair for us to do this because anyone that's looking at the house, they think we're getting a view. And even if we keep the house, you know, we're losing view. So there are some options. If they do go for a four foot setback, or we agree, which I think the other neighbor kind of agreed and said, okay, if they do the four foot setbacks, then no bump outs because that takes another eighteen inches or the bay window. But in doing that also, maybe reduce two feet of ocean foot setbacks so that we gain space, or gain a little bit of sight. We won't gain a lot, but we'll gain what we've lost if they go a foot wider. In doing that, if you guys go to four foot setbacks, they will then gain, well, if you cut off two feet from the front, off of fifteen feet wide, they lose six, get my numbers straight, thirty feet down below, thirty feet up above, so that's sixty feet total. Okay, you guys following me this, if they cut it back? If they cut that back sideways, or go out sideways, they gain, I don't know what the length of this project is, I have to look at their map. Say it's thirty feet long on their building, they gain thirty feet downstairs on both sides, that's sixty feet, and they gain thirty feet on both sides up above, that's a hundred and twenty feet. So they would have a net gain of sixty feet. I think, and Robin is a realtor, to be able to retain some of our view out front, you know, sideways, you know, a little bit, probably is worth more than giving up the four feet. But you know, I don't really like houses this close, but the good thing is we have fifteen feet on our side. So we have this big space of land and this is, when we bought this, we paid a lot. It's on the tax roll for a lot, our real market's a lot, our real market value of the land is a lot. Every foot of our, that we're encroached on, we figured every foot of our land is worth fourteen thousand five hundred on the real market value and the tax value. So it's not fair to us and it's not fair for, to lose that real market value. Now, I can't, if they decide to go with five foot and they do the eighteen inch bay windows, we wouldn't lose our sight distance. You know, we, we could still see around the corner, which we would lose if they went, I know I'm kind of illusioning here, Sam, right?
No, I'm trying to, you haven't quite oriented me, which property is yours?
I, I am the thirty-five thirty, I am directly to this south of them.
Are, are you the big brown house?
Yeah.
Okay, directly to the south.
Directly, yeah, the south.
Okay, now I'm oriented, that, that's all I needed.
Yeah, so, so we're really kind of torn because I can't stop them from going out and blocking the oceanfront and I knew that would happen someday, but by building one foot more out the side, we lose a little bit of our sight view. That, you know, that doesn't sound like, I'll give them another twelve inches, doesn't sound like much, but if you look at the one that was built to the south of us, that four foot is close and if it was four foot and then they also allowed bay windows on that, it would be super close. So, so if you do go with four foot, I hope that there would be restrictions on the bay windows or the, out into the easement because they get very close at that distance. So I know that there can be eighteen inches overhang of roots, you can't change that, but once you start adding a bay window. Now, I made this really complicated for you guys. That's just kind of my input.
Thank you. Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think the four foot though is the new evidence, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's
Really doesn't apply to what we're actually looking at tonight.
Well, it can, as a opponent, to come in and state this would be something that would work better, that's, that's not new evidence from the originator.
No, but it's taken from
So that's, that's a comment that's being made to us.
I mean, we would have to say it goes back to the planning commission, that's a different plan.
Yeah, and we can, we could still do that.
I believe the public hearing is still open.
Yes, and Any other opponents? Does staff have any response to what's been presented?
I'm speechless now. I would, I would, I would remand it. If you get asked for my rendition, I would remand it at this time. It seems like new evidence.
Okay. And then at that point, I will ask the appellant, do they wish to make any additional statements? David?
Uh, no.
Okay. So now I will close the public hearing and move for consideration.
I've got a question.
I've got a question, maybe Jeff or Ashley can answer. Is denial of the appeal, does that prevent them from going back and working out an arrangement that satisfies all the neighbors and all the parties, and taking it back to the planning commission and going through this again? Or is there, you know, if it's denied, it seems to me that there's some rule that says they can't reapply for some period of time.
There is for, it's only one of our dummy decisions that has, where it can have a six-month.
Oh, that's, okay, that's right.
But, you know, I don't think it's, you know, if we're back for this decision. I think very fond of that, but I don't.
No, I, once you've said that, I stand corrected.
Well, I assume it would be a new proposal.
But what that clause says in that ordinance states, they can't come back to anything similar.
Okay.
So that's why I think we're not allowed it. But I think that is for going mapping.
You're right. You're right on that.
And I think the, you know, we can deny it, and they can bring it back, do that. Remanding it is a little more efficient. If that is the direction they would want to go, to go back to the planning commission, just by remanding it back to the planning commission for new evidence to be presented. I just think that's efficiencies. That's up to.
I agree with that. I do have some questions on the, just the technical aspect of, say, the setbacks were changed, how does that affect how the projections would come out? Wouldn't that be from, the projections are allowed, assuming a building is meeting the setbacks, if they're already encroaching in them by a foot?
Yeah, so whatever decision they make on the setbacks, you're still allowed to do a projection, so that, they have to take that into consideration, just like you all would if you are making a decision. Would you, in other words, I don't believe, and maybe Ashley might want to weigh in on this, but I don't believe they can make a condition to, that's kind of what I understand.
No, it's not.
Not to allow projections?
No, my question would be if the home was given a setback reduction of three feet or four feet. How does that affect whether they could put those projections out into the setback?
That's what I'm trying to say, is that if you say it's three feet, is the setback direction you want to allow is, you can allow a two-foot reduction to a five-foot reduction, but still allow another eighteen inches?
That seems a lot.
What if we, what if we allowed a zero? I don't think that's correct.
That sounds a little weird.
I see.
So I'll flag that one for.
That's why there is no zero.
There are in the commercial zones, but then they're not allowed for that projection?
Initially, I was, I was prepared to say no on the evidence that was presented. The only itch that I was wanting to hear better was from the fire department, but I did read that they had read over, and they were comfortable with the space that was allowed. Looking at the property, obviously on the south side, there's plenty of room for the concerns that a normal setback is as allowing room for the fire department to be able to get through when they need to. Going to three feet on the north side still concerns me. So if I were giving suggestion to the planning commission in order to look at new evidence, I would say be more concerned on the north side than on the south side. But that's kind of a general comment, not, I think also, the, the comment of saying the way it was, and I can't find it, I've been looking for it again, but I read it in here about the fact that fifteen feet is not enough. Seems like a little slap in the face for those folks who have less than fifteen feet and done fine. So granted, I, you would want to maximize and get as much square footage as possible, and I understand that. So that's just where I'm coming from. So any other questions, concerns? Then we were looking for a motion.
I'm going to remand this back to the planning commission.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on remanding it back to the planning commission?
Were remanding it back to the planning commission with any direction or anything else to look at? Why are we remanding it back?
Because there's new evidence.
So.
And I feel they're very qualified to come up with their own reasons that they would be for or against.
So that would be the direction then to look at, the new evidence?
Yes.
Okay. Colleen?
Council President Benfield.
No.
Counselor Risley?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes.
Okay. Back to work. Next item. Where am I? Here I am. Consideration of utility relief request appeal. Karen? Karen's coming. Oh, I have, okay, better do all that stuff again. No, go ahead and make your.
So a caller of last year, the Public Works Committee reviewed a utility relief request for Michael Cotton, who decides that two-nine-three-nine south unlocked. And based on the current code language and the criteria for any appeal to be considered, is only for wastewater portion of the bill, and only if the water did not end up in the waste water system. And so for this particular applicant, he was required to pay a hundred percent of the water that he used, and in the case of this particular address, all the water went into the toilet subsequently into the wastewater system. So the Public Works Committee denied Mr. Cotton's appeal appropriately for the wastewater portion. On December twenty-eighth, Mr. Cotton appealed to the Public Works Committee decision, and that's what I've come to do for you tonight, for consideration. Mr. Cotton was not able to, tonight, if he could contact us and let us know if he's still trying to hold back.
Question, yeah.
Is, when is the meter red? Is it always at the end of the month?
No, it's typically on the twentieth of the month, depending on if that falls on a Saturday or a Sunday, and if it's a Sunday, it's created on Monday, and if it's a Saturday, it's created on Friday.
Because I looked at his bill, and it just looked like, wow, that really stood out. So I was wondering if at the point that it was red, that it could have been discovered.
Well, when the meters are red, and you have an indicator in Casell, we have crapper set that it would flag somebody on their bill if they're on the leak list.
But would it also concern the meter person?
The technician would probably be able to tell that there's something going on, and Darrell typically contacts people and let them know, doesn't always have the way to fulfill, like he comes out and puts it on there.
There's a note stating just that. The nine-twenty-five Darrell left message regarding high usage and turned meter down.
Correct. So was, is, I don't know if this is any of my business, but this is obviously a second home person.
It is, and as soon as Mr. Cotton was aware of this, he had a plumber out immediately and dealt with it. So it's not something that he waited till his next trip down, he dealt with it right
It's just up to us. Need a motion to either uphold or make a change.
If we end up saying he needs to pay the whole amount, is there a way he could work out paying it? I mean, that is a huge, huge debt.
If this bill was an excess of three thousand dollars that had been paid by Mr. Cotton, well, he wouldn't be asking for payment arrangements, which is particularly painful. Yeah, personally, probably have to make some arrangements and might have to.
I move we uphold the Public Works Committee's decision to deny the utility relief request.
I'll second it.
Motion made to tie and seconded. Any other discussion?
Absolutely.
And the Budget Committee, this year when we go over this, I've asked for funding for our new meter modules that we'd like to change up. This is a really new case where customers can monitor their own usage daily, if they want to, by the hour if they want to. I have a new meter on my home that I've played around in it, doing a beta test to see how I feel about these modules. And I think in this case, Mr. Cotton would have known immediately that something was going on, not just thirty days later when his bill, meter was red and still was out. So this is, this is a really good opportunity for us to see the value of those meter modules being changed out, so something to keep in mind. There's a couple of ways to handle things like this, considering, you know, caps limits to these extreme cases like this. But honestly, if we were to change out the meter module, I mean, a lot of this stuff goes away. Something to keep in mind when I come back.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Colleen? Oh, the motion is to accept the planning, the Public Works Committee's suggestion.
Yeah. Counselor Olding?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes our regular meeting. Does any of the council, or any status reports from staff, or any council communications?
Nancy and I had a meeting with Brian Olson, who was talking to us about short-term rentals. And if anyone wants to come to our next meeting, his wife is going to come and show us how the fourteen day works. Might be a good lesson for all of us, yeah.
Interesting. It's third Monday, correct? Third Monday, ten o'clock?
Yes.
And that's every month?
Yes.
Does anybody have anything for good of the order?
I just want to make sure that I get to the meetings that I need to be at. Has there been any changes other than the April fifteenth meeting?
Fifteenth is the work session with Carolyn.
Okay.
April twenty-fourth is the city hall, is F R D.
Yes.
I'll be here. That's all I have for April.
All right, thank you, Colleen. A work session next week?
Work session next week?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, sorry, tonight, a big work session.
Night. Did you say there's nothing tomorrow?
Nothing tomorrow.
Next Tuesday, the following Monday, and then the twenty-fourth.
The night is big. And obviously, the twelfth is important. Come plant a tree.
Plant some trees.
And Friday is get lit, the chamber. Yeah, Friday night's the opening thing.
They're having a lit crawl on Friday night.
Friday night, that's open to everybody.
One of the, one of the crawl places is the public library, by the way, the public library, the Cannon Beach Library. Peter Lindsay will be reading from his book.
Also the community potluck here, the flyer they've left us on Friday, April nineteenth.
Community potluck, yes. And what was? April eleventh, good grief. Next week is a busy week. Okay. I just, just, interesting little note, I don't know if anybody else read the article in the Astorian about the county commission having a parliamentarian onsite? Thought that was kind of intriguing, might help, we'll see. A parliamentarian?
A referee.
Yes, a referee is a person who would have helped us sort out this de novo gizmo pretty It's something that Tammy and I used to try and sort out more. I still think we should do some more boning up on that occasionally. But other than that, I just thought that was interesting for the county, because they've had some challenges. Other than that, I have nothing else, so we'll adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you.